Lord Mayor, to advise members that apologies for absence have been received from councillors Dave Cummings, George Nim, Barry Kushner, Joanne Kushner, Sarah Wharton and Gerard Woodhouse. Are there any other further apologies? councillor Lindsay Mead?
Yes, Lord Mayor, I can perhaps give opposite apology. I'm excited that Lily gave in to apology. She will be back. Council resolutions would be like this exactly made up of the day we played football today. So she's actually obviously got on. Lily needs to take the notice to make sure she's all right when we accept the apology. She's staying with her ceremony and this one anybody sit down like until after. It's important that everyone knows why.
Lord Mayor, can I remind members that you are only required to declare at meetings any disclosure of curatorial or projectal interest, in which case the member will need to leave the chamber during consideration of the item. Are there any such declarations?
Well, I have total interest in item 7A as the chairman of the local authority mutual investment trust, which is a commercial property fund for local government. Incidentally, it's on pay in case anyone wants to ask. The minutes of the last meeting of the council, can I ask, but the minutes of the Portia City Council meeting on the 6th of March 2019 are approved, which are attached as appendix one to this. Are they agreed?
Lord Mayor, just while you're here, there's a lot of people know Mayor's brother, Jed, it's a brother Michael that was a younger brother, just in case people don't Jed from the bit, it's not Jed, it's a younger brother Michael.
Lord Mayor, can I formally report that 2019 local election results are set out on pages 15 to 25 of the agenda?
Okay, it's my intention now to welcome all new councillors to Liverpool City Council and to those councillors who are returning after the local elections. As we hope that for the new councillors, that it's going to be quite a new experience and one that you will hopefully take in your stride. But I'm sure that there are many longstanding councillors and certainly council officers to help you, assist you, advise you along the way. Please, please don't be afraid to ask. Thank you very much. Don't get this right. Appointment of the deputy mayors of Liverpool, cabinet members and responsibilities and mayoral leads 2019-20. Mayor Anderson.
Lord Mayor, can I advise council, the council when we started, has been given the status of designation of deputy mayor. The council intended and councillor Gary Villa dedicates it as deputy mayors and the names of cabinet members and the portfolios are set out as appendix two. The names of the mayoral leads will be circulated and all members will be forwarded to the next meeting of the city council.
I think I just ask a couple of questions of the elected mayor. Firstly, in discussions that you had with group leaders before the elections, you did suggest that you might create a mayoral select committee and not to do the bit itself which you rightly objected to last time, but perhaps in the way that we're doing for the experimental council meetings, just take two or three issues in the year and consider in great depth and detail jointly how those might be tackled. I know it's not here today, is it your intention to revisit that idea later or perhaps follow the suggestion I made about some sort of ongoing mayoral commission to look at it? The second thing is that as our first, if I could put this way, proper council meeting, we wouldn't be diverting that to climate change. And it seemed to me that perhaps as a result of that, we might choose either to recommend jointly from all of us that we need to have a cabinet member specifically looking at or some sort of ongoing support committee.
Lord Mayor, we are going to talk about the constitutional issues committee. We're happy to pick up them, but not at this particular stage. We are going to be talking about that on item 10 and I'll discuss those two particular issues each way.
Okay, so can we leave that discussion for now, please? Thank you. Responsibility for functions and scheme of delegation 2019-20 are set out on pages 25 to 82 of the agenda. councillor Rupert Murdoch?
I move that the recommendation of the Constitutional Issues Committee held on 5th of May 2019 in respect of responsibility of functions and the scheme of delegation for 2019-20 are set out in the report submitted on pages 26 to 83 of the agenda, be approved together with, along the director of regeneration and employment services, to be given the following delegated authority to exercise all powers under the regulatory reform five safety order 2005 in relation to Anfield and Goodison Park sports ground, as approved at council meeting on the 18th of July 2018.
Yeah, Lord Mayor, can you stop adding to that with regards to the, it links into the inclusive growth plan and also links into the mayoral reform. I intend this year to actually put another £1 million to be made available to local wards, in particular the poorest wards in the city, to enable them to do projects or work on projects within the city, within the same of the wards in particular, in relation to inclusive growth. So there will be a framework that will be sent to all members shortly, but it's very much in relation to the serious issues that many parts of the city face. We've, I spoke today at the National Federal Easter Credit Unions, just been doing an interview about universal credit. The challenges that are facing the poorest people in the city is getting really, really difficult for them to manage and there are many organisations and many community groups that need our support to help them deliver to those poorest parts of the city and the wards. So we're going to be looking at working on this framework in conjunction with council of Corvo's around equality and supporting poverty issues within the city. So we'll present that, I think we will do that through our leaders sessions, but there will be a framework that's presented to councils so they can look at whether and where their communities are within that matrix about how they can bid for extra money. And as long as it's linked to inclusive growth and as long as it's supporting the most vulnerable and the poorest access resources or support, that's how it will be used. So it's in addition to the neighbourhood fund of £1 million, it's in addition to that. And I just make the point that, by the way, I think it's, just to make the point up, well actually, we procured an agreement with Redrow and Almiron House a number of years ago. And it was as a result of that procured contract arrangement that we've got some money and that money has been put back into the poorest neighbourhoods. So just to let you know where it come from.
Any other speakers? Is that agreed? Thank you. 7A Commercial Property Investment Strategy, councillor Rupert?
I move that the decision of Cabinet of the 17th of May 2019 to endorse the proposed Commercial Property Investment Fund strategy outlined within the report and strategy are set out on pages 258 to 299 with the supplementary agenda be approved.
Any other speakers? councillor Meganson?
Thank you, my lord mayor. I hope not to delay you too long for your guests, but we'll be opposing item 7A, not least for the way this has been pushed through, through a supplementary agenda that only actually appeared on Friday night. I suspect this document is probably still sitting in some mental pigeonholes.
Lord Mayor, I'd hope so. Lord Mayor, can I just raise a point of order and it's absolutely listen, I hope you, I'm sure, will be fair and equitable in your decision-making process, but the councillor has mislead them, council members. It was sent out in the proper way, 10 days ago, in the proper way, for it to be called in and debated and discussed. And indeed, you could have turned up the cabinet where it was discussed last week. So to give a false impression to people that it's been forced through on Friday is just not true.
My lord mayor, I have actually the email that came out for this supplementary agenda and it was at half two on Friday.
For this supplementary agenda? That is actually for this. So the supplementary agenda was to tell you that this item was going to be a supplementary agenda to this. The actual item went out in the proper process 10 days before it was discussed at Cabinet. And you're telling me that in all the years you've been sitting here, you don't know that? But obviously you don't.
We go, I'll park that argument for that because there are plenty of other issues.
You cannot park it, you have lost it. You have lost your argument. So you are, as I expect, you are lost it. The city solicitor there or the law there or the chief executive will correct if I'm wrong the fact that that report went out in proper due process in the timelines that we follow. Am I, can somebody confirm that that was the case, please?
Okay, so that's the case. So as the pre-opposition to this, we vote straight to the votes.
Sorry, I was actually trying to finish my points, my lord mayor. So I will be brief. Just for those who, anyone who may not agree, this proposal is borrowing, what, 25 million pounds, half of which would be borrowed money, to gamble on commercial property investments around the UK. No reference has actually been made in reports to SIPR guidance, which strongly recommends that all investment property is restricted to the locality of the council's area. Yet we're being asked to approve a strategy that would see no more than 25% of this 15 million invested within local. This means most of this money will have no regeneration benefit to this city. At the very least, a commitment like this should have at least, should have been first referred to the audit committee or proper unthorough scrutiny for a decision of this size. So for all these reasons, we will be opposing this.
councillor Bradford?
Certainly, I was aware the items were circulated and members got to it. Can I make a suggestion? I don't think there's any merit delaying a decision to be properly circulated. I'd imagine it's the sort of funding and investment opportunity that will develop. It won't happen overnight. But can I, can we deal with a question about local authority boundaries? When you're making a good investment, does it matter if the business is parked on one side of things or going to duck off or the other side of things? Does it really matter whether it's parked on one side of Elwood, the Elwood's been parked or the Liverpool part of Elwood? I think we need to get away from seeing things in narrow boundaries of local government through the insular and cut across communities. What we actually should be doing is thinking about political travel to work area. I make no apologies, no doubt, I would break the mind of our running members for saying, my husband's a person I may recruit across 10 local authorities in the UK. Because that must improve for investment of professional labour. You don't just say, oh, it's going to stop the pretty people if they're on the wrong side of Elwood's border, or they're on the wrong side of Compton, or the wrong side of Elwood. So the idea that somehow if you invest in the business that's going to give you a good return, the hand that you just outside the door is wrong, is actually showing a total inevitability for the concept of the travel work to area. So the councillor Meganson's objection, I think, is actually dangerous and short-sighted.
To the panel, over to you.
Lord Mayor, the mayor is absolutely right, this did go to Cabinet and that, you know, it would have been impossible to accrue the decision from Cabinet, but it went to Cabinet right in the middle of two really important elections. And I think there's a real point, real problem here with the lack of transparency. If, in the normal run, I think this could have been supported by elected members from all parties and they would have wanted to call that in for scrutiny, but it's happened, you know, it's a classic case of very news, whether it's good or bad, we haven't yet had the chance to have a look at it. What we want to do is get this properly scrutinised by all the government. We can ask questions about the risks, questions about whether the assumptions are sound and we could possibly agree to move it forward, but it's got to be done in the proper way and I really think it should be backed from this scrutiny.
councillor Corvoth? And then you, Steve.
I've looked at this quite carefully and I've already emailed over to the finance director. The basis of this is to raise revenue for the council to counteract the cuts from the government. The thing that we can do in Liverpool, which is quite unusual from other cities, is that we can tie this really carefully into our inclusive growth plan. So it's a double whammy in a positive way for us. So we can invest money with a structure that has been legally checked, because I've looked at that and that's been, that's been very carefully framed, okay? So we know that it hits the right rules for local government. It's in the context of the inclusive growth plan, it helps us grow the city, so at least 25, and I would expect a lot more than that to come into the city, because what we can do is, we can look at the investment within the city that helps to grow our, that helps our inclusive growth plan and brings us revenue. So the whole thing can actually be joined up positively. And in the middle of that, if you look at what we've already got in place in the inclusive growth plan, is our fair city agenda, which links up with fair city businesses, which then has a definition of what good business is. So we are not going to put money into bad investment and bad business. So we're going to put it into good business, which actually gives a good return for us and tied into our growth plan and gives us revenue for the city. So it should be a win-win every single stage. And I know Steve wants it, sorry councillor Humpy wants it referred to all the governance and I think that would be a good idea because it would give, and we are out of time for calling it in, it would be a good idea councillor Tootman is going to chair that and then we'd get a really good debate on this. But as far as I understand it, I've looked at it really carefully, it is the legal framework that we've got to get in place now and then we can tie all of that together and you've got it, all of the other stuff is actually in place, so that links all the jigsaw pieces up together.
Thank you councillor Corvoth. councillor Humpy?
Fine, I'll follow up from what comes to the Corbyn's there. The council here, I think, are welcome, but important to consider carefully, there's three or four issues it raises. One is, we've done investment before in specific things, QRF building, great success, but this extends the range of that. That needs consideration, consideration. There is an argument between to consider about growing public risk in property investment. It doesn't mean we shouldn't do it, but it needs to be considered. Then the issue is in terms of the inclusive growth bank. What's the balance for investment for, to make money or to invest in the city? Now, there's no perfect answers to that question, but there are issues of public interest which we should consider. And recognise that this strategy has to be agreed by full council and I think it should come back here to be agreed, but I think it will be great benefit in further deliberation in audit before it comes about, because with all due respect to this chamber, it's not the best space for detailed consideration and I think audit in governance, which sadly are no longer sitting, I'm sure the chair will be mortified by that, but would be a good place for further discussion and it'll be, I think, everybody could get behind.
councillor Miller?
Be brief. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Welcome, Lord Mayor. The fact that there's been elections and there will be another election, makes no difference. We're here to serve the city every day of the year and as much and as well as we can and let's not be distracted by elections. And also, all of our members understand that papers come out for Cabinet in advance, one week in advance and you have an opportunity, I know it's too early in the morning, but your councillor Meganson to get out to a Cabinet meeting, you read the papers, come along, question us there at Cabinet, that's your job. If you're not doing it, you're failing doing your job. And also, it was Liberal Democrat policy to Richard Kemp in the city to have a Liverpool bank that would do things just like that. So you're changing your minds now, you think it's a bad idea because we've come up with a great idea. And you know what? It's only about creating a fund, it's not about actually making the investment. All of it in dominance, Cabinet members, all of us in this chamber can come to every committee, every Cabinet meeting and can question us and say, this is not right. This is right and you've had the opportunity to actually come to the meetings, to call it in and you grandstand there and say it's a bad idea. It's a great idea, please support it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Miller. Mayor Anderson?
There is no issue about referring it to the select committee or referring it to all this, I've got no problem with that, absolutely not. So let's just do it. You know what? I am not going to take lectures from the Liberal Democrats who opposed QRF, opposed it, opposed our investments in the airport, opposed our investments in Finch Farm. All that investment is now bringing this money, exactly as councillor Corvoth said, to spend on services in this city. That was cut from us while you were in government, your party were in government. But let's not forget that, we're not going to take any lectures from you about it, but you know, it absolutely amazes me that in front of you and in front of all the councillors, you will see the legal framework and I would refer to SIPR and the SIPR guidance and it's an insult to the legal team at this council and to our finance director and the chief executive when you're actually questioning that, because I have more confidence and greater confidence in their ability than I would ever have in yours or your opponents. The fact is, let's take it back to the generation selected, let's take it to audit in the house and let's scrutinise it, because we only do it if it's a good deal for our city. So I've got no problem in transparency or openness in terms of that, but don't sit there and criticise us for not following the proper process when we did.
councillor?
We've agreed to defer it. We've agreed to defer it back, so the point was that we defaced the question before, is everybody agreed that it gets deferred back for orders that were set?
Okay, so is that, is that agreed that it goes to audit government on the page you did do and then comes back here to councillor on the subject you did do then? Is that agreed? Thank you.
Number eight, sorry, I, review of financial regulations 2019-20.
councillor Rupert?
I move that the recommendation of the Constitutional Issues Committee set, held on the 9th of May 2018 in respect of financial regulations for 2019-20 are set out in the report submitted on pages 84 to 98 of the agenda be approved.
Other any speakers? Okay, is that agreed? Thank you. Number nine, contract standing orders 2019-20. councillor Rupert?
I move that the recommendation of the Constitutional Issues Committee held on the 9th of May 2019 in respect of contract standing orders 2920 and is set out in the report submitted on pages 99 to 153 of the agenda be approved.
Other any speakers? Okay, is that agreed? Thank you. Number 10, procedural standing orders 2019-20. councillor Rupert?
I move that the recommendation of the Constitutional Issues Committee held on the 9th of May 2019 in relation to amendments to the procedural standing orders be approved.
Mayor Anderson?
Yeah, Lord Mayor, we did have a discussion, the councillor Kemp alluded to that in his discussion, on the issue of the mayoral scrutiny committee. I prefer it back to my points that I made to when we met and the mayoral scrutiny committees failed miserably, failed absolutely miserably and the reason why they did it because it was bus lanes, bus lanes, bus lanes, bus lanes, bus lanes, bus lanes. That was all that everyone was discussing, nothing more, nothing else. Readings and readings of bus lane, bus lane, questions and stuff, wasting council officers' time. The councillor had to agree with me that that was what it made me. So I'm all in favour of scrutiny. In fact, the LTA, as you are aware, you've heard the report, it's on page 224, actually said that there was no scrutinised council in the country. That's what they said, not what I said, the LTA actually said it, page 224. We've actually now, so the answer to that is if you come up with a structure or you come up with a way of doing it differently, I'll consider it. But I'm also going to talk to group members of my group, but also to all councillors here to talk about how we had a positive discussion around how do we look at, how do we get a better debate and movement of things that are important to our city. Now, I'm throwing that back at you because it's only half an hour ago that we said when we all stand together and all fight for the things that are important to our city, we work together. That's what you said, it was quite moving. But the reality is, is that, is that we discussed, we view councillor Hafferty, councillor Crone, we discussed how we would look at together the council cycle and how we have better debates and we agreed that the first meeting, as I suggested, that we had for our first debate and discussion, the issue of climate change. You also agreed with me as we discussed the issues of climate emergency. If you remember, we had that discussion around that and I agreed with councillor Crone that we were indeed facing an emergency of climate concerns and it was an urgency. But I also pointed out to them that what we needed was the government to respond with the opposition. I'm absolutely thrilled and delighted to say that Labour nationally, our Labour comrades in Parliament persuaded the Parliament and government to accept a climate emergency. And so I have absolutely no problem and no qualms in declaring that we have a climate emergency and it's now about how do we deal with it and what can we do together in agreement, knowing the consequences of our actions and our inactions and how we do that. So there is an urgency around this issue and I intend to set up a climate select committee and there will be an opportunity for us to agree, not just a statement about climate emergency at that meeting, but about how but about how do we then progress, how do we actually tackle the issues of our emissions? How do we look at housing and energy conservation? How do we look at all of the things that have got an impact on us? Not only for one meeting, but over a succession, because I intend to put in a Cabinet member for climate change. And that will then mean that we'll have a select committee that will respond to the first initial meeting of the council. Then the select committee picks up and talks about how we deliver that. So there will be an additional select committee on top of the eight that we already have. So having a mayor select committee on top of what we've got, to me, is going to push the limits of council officers to the very edge. But the important thing for council to notice is that I intend to continue to have further dialogue with yourself, with councillor Bradford, with councillor Cronin, to look at how we actually then select the other issues for debate. You'll hear the announcements on council housing. And for the first time, we're building up, creating council houses in the city. So there'll be a debate and a discussion around council housing. We can have a discussion about education and education standards and skills. There are many things that we can discuss, but that will be open to members of the council to decide through you and through Steve and through Tom Cronin, about what it is we want to debate and discuss. But we all agree that the first one should be on the agency that the country faces in dealing with climate, the climate problems. And I think we should move to the language of climate agency or emergency and rather than climate change. But we've already started to do some of that in the city, but we need to do much, much more. So that will give us an opportunity. And the reason why I like it, I, again, if you recall, and I'm sure you won't mind me repeating, I was absolutely 110% committed to having this structure around climate change. Because not just me, but my grandchildren. And every one of us should be worried about that and worried about our future. So that's what we will do. And I believe that we'll get results when every single one of us in this chamber join up and join together and say to the members of the public, "I'm sorry, but we're doing this in the interest not of you today, but our children for tomorrow." So that's where we'll be in terms of the climate change meeting. And then we will follow that through with a select committee that actually, and a Cabinet member, that will actually deliver on what we do at the select committee we look forward.
I'd just like to respond to that and say I agree with every word that Mayor Anderson has just said. I don't think that having another Mayor's Select Committee is the right way forward. What we need to do is discuss the right way we can set the forums for continuing debate on a number of issues. The number of times we can do it in the council is limited. And there are other subjects that we want to look at, as you know, I'm particularly interested in health inequality. But the more we can do jointly, the more we can do without a lot of small resolutions. We bring out the worst in, and it's not the best, the better. So I welcome your announcement today that there will be a Cabinet member in the Select Committee, and we will support you fully in that work.
Thank you councillor Bradford.
I'd be very proud of that. Without any equivocation, let's be quite candid. The Mayor's Scrutiny Committee that last met was, I mean, I used to leave some meetings after two and a half hours of field, but I wanted to go and slash my wrists. And they were absolutely atrocious. They were absolutely appalling. But we had petty, not even war matters, about traffic heights and bus lanes and consultations and how many procedural issues to discuss, a procedural issue to discuss, a procedural issue. It was strangled to death. And it brought out the worst abuse of the council committee into it. So I think Jill was actually very generous in her description, but it was absolutely atrocious. I can only remember in two years having one informal debate on how the mayoral model was working in Liverpool compared to other local authorities. I think that was a presentation generally. So let's, but if we are going to try new developments, I will put it out and I'm not going to debate, as far as the constructive opposition here is concerned. We would be mindful, but I think it would be helpful if there was a mayoral question time in balance to the mayoral statements. That would give a balance. And again, we hope it is not viewed. I also suggest, I think one of the most successful achievements was when political parties and the trade union representatives were reported, and it involved the budget work of parties. And again, it was an activity, it was sabotaged by the Liberal Democrats and Greens, saying one minute we're in and the next minute saying we're out. It was a bit like Hokey Poki suckies, you know, where they were around. So I think people got to use these opportunities constructively. It's not just about structures, it's about having the mind frame to use the structures to the purpose they were designed.
Thank you councillor Norby.
Just very briefly, I just want to sort of commend the sort of new structures that has emerged with leaders meeting with chief executives regularly. It has brought about some really positive outcomes. And I do think this climate change debate is going to be extremely beneficial to us as a council and to the city. It was actually great to hear the mayor speaking in those terms about climate change, about how urgent it is. Of course, I completely agree. And I think we're finally going to start taking steps to really treat it with the urgency of deserts. So just to, I was going to say a lot about climate change, but you've said so much earlier, which I was looking forward to the debate, and I really hope it can be positive, constructive.
Okay, any more speakers now? Would that of minds, can we?
It's on the agenda right on the card vote. My understanding of the CIC discussion was actually about extensions, because the usual practice is for people to stand. And I've just checked the minutes of the meeting on the 9th of May, it is on that issue rather than the card vote. So I don't know why that's come about. It's a mistake. So it should be about the extensions.
Okay, thank you councillor Thompson. So that of minds, can we agree with what the mayor has proposed for vote? Is that agreed? Thank you. Number 11, scheme of members' allowances 2019/20, councillor Rupert Bennet, my, obviously, I'm here.
I move that the recommendation of the independent remuneration panel on members' allowances is set out in the report submitted on pages 153 to 176 be approved.
Okay, so yeah.
Can I just say, I'll be very brief, because I've made a lot of previous council meetings. Whilst we didn't make a submission this year, on the Alphabell Party Group, I think the proportionate remuneration for the roles of ward councillors is just proportionately low. I think that the allocation of extra money to the committee chairman is excessive to the extra work it does. To that person, then, sorry, I apologize. And I don't think it's in kilter. And this has been my view for a long time. And I don't think that issue has been addressed. So I'll argue, we'll just move against the item. And I don't remember having any disrespect to people, having, I think we just got, it's not reflective of the workload that we should be recognising.
Okay councillor Cronin?
Lord Mayor, we were invited a couple of weeks ago to submit comments about the members' allowances scheme. And I gave, basically, my belief is that with every single department in this council experiencing huge cuts and huge cuts to their services, I feel that, you know, it shouldn't be councillors alone who seem to escape any kind of impact from austerity. So I, and like councillor Bradford, I think some of the special responsibility allowances are quite excessive. So I gave a detailed response, putting a number of ideas forward for ways to reduce the overall cost of special responsibility allowances. And actually, that would have amounted to over £190,000 per year potential saved by the council. A lot of money that could be carved back into frontline services where they're needed most. And they had those comments already called, and the scheme remains as it is. So just for the rest of the time, we're voting against this, this party.
Okay, thank you councillor Norby. Any more speakers? No? Us? Oh, councillor Corbett?
I expected to say yes, that's got the wages right down, but I should have said the opposite. Because for years I proposed and we agreed that we would freeze our allowances, and we froze them for a very long time. We've just got to be really careful here, because for some people, they haven't got a wage coming in apart from the allowance they get from the council. Now, that is part of the mix of the discussion. I'm not saying that's what we drive it on, but that's part of the mix. So I think we just need to have a think about this really carefully, because in comparison to other councils, we're actually not too bad. If you look at what we're paying, in some cases, we're much lower. So if we could just have a think about that, because poverty for a lot of people in this chamber is very real. And it's getting worse as the cost of living is rising. For some people, it's okay. I'm not doing enough to have a husband who's got a wage, which is brilliant, but it's okay. So that's not my only income. For some people, it is their only income.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson.
Look, Mayor, this is an independent panel that we have that looks at the allowances. I know that there are allowances paid in other authorities that are very high in terms of compared to the local. So I think what we will do is ask for, I think there'll be in the next three months, three months, that we can ask for representation to be made to them again in light of what's been said. And maybe you can ask for a cross-selection of members or whatever to put that. But they are an independent group, they've rejected that, that it proposed increase, they've rejected that. But I think in light of what's been said, it's worthwhile us going back to them again and saying, you know, that's just a reconsidering.
Okay, so can we move to the votes? Those in favour of the recommendation by councillor Rupert Bennet? Against? Any extensions? So the vote is 69 for, 7 against, and no extensions. So it's carried. Thank you. 12 political proportions on committees 2019/20. Can I remind members that, as indicated in the report and the agenda, in order to suspend proportionality for the committees listed, all members present must vote in favour with no dissenting votes. This being to comply with the requirements of section 17, one being local government allowance act 1989. If there are any members dissenting, then proportionality rules are applied to those committees. Councillor Rupert?
I move that, one, the political proportions on committees and the allocation of seats are set out and the pendants three attached to this note be approved. Two, the proposed appointments of chairs of committees as circulated be approved. And three, the deputy chairs of committees be appointed at the first meeting of each committee and reported to the next meeting of the city council.
Thank you. An amendment to speak?